Calling the Newcastle City Council meeting of Monday, July 17, 2023 to order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, we do need to make one addition under Citizens Business Verbal. Number three, John Howley.
May I move that we approve the agenda with amendment?
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, Monday, July 3, 2023.
May I move that we approve those matters?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any nominations for recognition?
Well, I don't have a nomination for recognition, but I think you and your husband ought to get an attaboy for your building.
Well, thank you.
We should recognize the First Northern Bank for their party on Friday night was great.
That was a mighty time.
It was, and the Arts Council also. It was very, very nice.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, we have no certificates today. No citizens business in writing. Citizensman's Business Verbal, number one, Bruce Perkins, motorcycle parking, open container.
We could sit with him on opposite side this thing tonight.
I'm requesting motorcycle parking like normal, like it would be every year. First main block between Sumner and Seneca, and then also between Seneca and Railroad. Curly queues will probably get a lot of business. Donnas dot are always there, always full, so always like to include them. Plenty of places to park to eat and afterwards. Those are the main parts right there for motorcycle parking.
I move what?
What dates are you looking at?
Oh, I'm sorry. The first through the 14th. Rally starts on the 4th and will end, I believe, the 13th or 14th.
Next August?
Yes. Don't expect any, how do you say, stragglers. Past four or five years, it's when it's over, it's over, they're gone. So I don't expect any stragglers.
Do we make a motion? Did you want to include the open container as well?
I didn't know if you wanted to do it all in one or two motions or...
We can do it all as one.
Okay. I'm asking for open container in front of the bar and the restaurant portion and the sidewalk, so we can put out tables and chairs. I know it's, we're cleared for tables and chairs until the ordinance has been reviewed. And we do put on the tables, you know, open container only at the tables, so they don't walk around town. They all know that it's just in that area. And just when the tables are out. And normally by 2:00 they're gone because they want to be at where they're at for the evening, so tables and chairs come in usually 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon, and that would end in the open container, just when the tables and chairs are out.
And what dates did you want that for? The same?
Same time, through the 1st and 14th.
Okay, just in front of your establishment?
Yes.
And what's the address there?
114 and 112 West Main.
Now we can make a motion.
Now, here I am, move that we, now we want both things. We want the parking...
Motorcycle.
Motorcycle parking and the open container in front of 112 and 114 West Main. And then the parking goes all the way down to Railroad Avenue from Sumner to Railroad.
Correct.
I move that we do that. For Bruce and the rest, they're not downtown merchants.
Two seconds.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Good with that?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
I think you ought to put those cute little umbrellas up, like you do in Paris, and I'll get some.
I could see one of them, taking them off down a motorcycle.
They would've gone in a week.
Okay, Citizens Business Verbal, number two, Marge Rupp.
I've never done this before, so if I do something wrong, please don't say hello. We live at 1508 Gray Boulevard, and in the last, in less than six months, we've had two sewer backups. I submitted a claim on the first one, which was in excess of $20,000. We thought that our homeowners insurance would cover, and there was a gap in our coverage. And as soon as we found out that we didn't have that coverage, we put it into effect the same day. But the bottom line is that we've had, within six months, we've had two occurrences of eight inches of sewer in our finished basement. I was told by the insurance company, LGLP of Wyoming is the insurance pool, that a governmental entity is liable for damage resulting from bodily injury or property damage caused by the negligence of public employees while acting within the scope of their duties in the operation of public utilities and services, including gas, electricity, water, solid and liquid waste collection or disposal, heating and air and ground transportation. Our review revealed that the city was notified, they responded accordingly, and determined obstruction to the main line was due to a buildup of wet wipes. There is no apparent negligence by the city or city employees. Well, I'm just an old farm girl, but when something happens twice to that severity in less than six months, somebody or something's not working. Now tell me if I'm incorrect in this assumption, but I was led to believe that the honor camp has had their sewer line, it's dumping into our Gray Boulevard in addition. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And when did that start?
1991-ish, I'm not exactly sure.
So, so what's happened in the last six months?
It's the buildup of flushes, unfortunately. It is an ongoing problem we have throughout town. Your sewer is not the only one that has that problem.
Now, there's quite a few in the neighborhood.
Unfortunately, with the intervention of flushable wipe, it's created a horrible problem. We've actually changed out pumps at our road station in Gray Addition to grind that up, flushables, because they were flooding it up so much, causing so many problems. It is an ongoing problem. It has been for several years. I wish I had an answer other than we need to do more outreach and tell people they are not flushable. And they are not. The only thing that should be down the toilet or down the sewer is water and toilet paper, basically. We've found all kinds of things in sewers that go along. Flushables is definitely one of them. It's been a big problem and has been for several years now. I wish I had a better answer for you earlier. I wish I knew I could keep them out of the sewers.
So is it feasible? Is it prudent to start a schedule where once a month, those filters are checked? Once every two months, the filters are checked?
Filters. We don't have filters in the correction system, so...
What is getting cluttered?
It's the sewer line itself.
There's no basket or something that collects them?
We collect them when we rob the sewers, when you install a basket to get debris out of the sewer, so it does not go on down the line and clutter yet again further. We have a basket that just is on rod, and we also have a vacuum truck that has a basket as well and use that at the same time.
So is there anything that can be done on a regular basis to avert this?
To be preventive maintenance, which we're likely to staff to do.
Well, I'm lacking the money to keep rebuilding my basement.
I understand. And I feel for you, I really do.
What's that thing called where it stops?
Check valve.
Yeah.
There, you can install a backwater valve.
And we've got that, as soon as a plumber will get back to us, we've got a contract for that to be done.
That's the best way to stop sewage from going back in your house from other people. Now your sewer won't go down until you implode it.
And from what we understand, the people that live across, straight across the street from us have backflow meters or backflow valves, and they're still getting a certain amount. Our next door neighbor has a backflow valve. He's still getting sewage in his basement. Come on, folks. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous that it happened to us twice in less than six months. And there's got to be something that can be done. Either new sewer lines put in that are bigger, another lift station, whatever the hell that, excuse me, whatever that is, I don't know, I'm not a sewage person, but I'm getting to be an expert. There's got to be something that can be done to stop the sewage from coming into our home.
Gray, can we get together and see what options we could probably look at?
I had intended to request a water sewer committee meeting for other reasons, but we can include this with the committee as well.
Okay.
It's going to get to the point where our insurers, our homeowners insurance is going to cancel us. My agent has already told me, you know, you can get by with it once, but the second time it happens, you're facing the fact that they're going to cancel you and you're going to have to go to high risk insurance. So we've already decided that we're not going to re-carpet it, we're not going to put, we're not going to put furniture down there. Basically, it's wasted space in our home that we're heating and we're air conditioning for nothing, except sewage holding. To say that I'm frustrated is about the biggest understatement that I can possibly give. Do you have anything else you want to say?
You pretty much said it all. Mrs. Silty across the street from us, she has one of those backup valves. She's had to have served pro out twice to her house.
At the same time that we did. There's no way that a person can pump out eight inches of sewage out of a house without having professional equipment.
Well, we'll have Gray get that committee together, and we'll kind, we'll make sure you know what our options are, but we'll also go to social media, radio and stuff, and let folks know to not flush that kind of stuff down. I know a letter has been sent out already to all of New...
Mass mailing. It was a mass mailing. Everybody got that letter. I'm sure you did.
Yeah.
We had started an outreach program trying to curb some of the flushable issues.
I'm so sorry. I mean...
We've had so many things that did not belong in sewers, in sewers over the years. It's, I don't even care to talk about it. We've had medical waste, we've had, actually, I saw the back end of the transmission of the sewer. You see railroad ties, tree branches, all kinds of different stuff. Unfortunately, they do cause backups. And yeah, we're looking into different options.
Can I be advised of what, or can I go to that meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll let you know when it is.
All right, thank you very much. And I'm not trying to make anybody here feel guilty.
We know that.
It's just that I am so frustrated.
I don't blame you. I do not blame you. I'm so sorry.
Moving on to Citizens Business Verbal, number three, John Howley.
I know that we've had big problems with our police department the last few years. It has not gotten any better. It has gotten worse.
Awesome.
I will go back in time. On July 3, my son was in an accident up on Highway 85. I went up there to check on him, make sure he is okay. Officer Moran was there, even though she is out of the city, I can understand being first responder, closest one. I can understand that. When the sheriff's department shows up, she should have came back to town. When the second sheriff showed up, she should have came back to town. When the highway patrol showed up, she should have came back to town. But she didn't. I told her the truth, and the first thing she yelled at me is, "You can't have a junkyard at your house." Well, I can, because that is not in the city limits. Your ordinances does not affect county property. And I told her to go give me a ticket, because I know it is a legal ticket. And it has been very well documented that this is in the county. That map right there shows it's in the county. Fire department knows it's in the county. The police department knows it's in the county. People on this board knows it's in the county. Why do I keep getting harassment from these guys? It's ridiculous. I called the chief, June 5, to ask him about it. He said, "Yeah, you have two tickets. Come up and get them." I said, "No, you have to come show me one violation." He was supposed to come up that night. There's an escaped honor camp. He was out doing that. He got a pass on that and on Tuesday. I never tried to talk to him on Tuesday. Wednesday, they were done searching for the escaped inmate up here. I tried to call him. Got his voicemail. He got my name out and it shut off. His voicemail is set for about two seconds. On Thursday, June 8, I called again. Wasn't in. But I talked to Sergeant Thompson. He came up to the house. He said that he couldn't find the tickets. He must be the chief's. But he told me what the ordinances were. How did he know what the ordinances were if he couldn't find the tickets? Because he told me he didn't know anything about the tickets. He also said, "Well, if I was on that accident scene, I would arrest you." Said, "For what?" "Well, I don't know. I would arrest you." Explaining constitutional amendments is not an arrestable offense. And I did not have contact with the police department, even though I've tried to call, leave voicemails, same thing. Two seconds, I get my name out and shuts off. I've left messages with dispatch, never got a call back. I finally got ahold of him on July 3. Four weeks it took me to get ahold of him. He said, "Oh, well, you're still going to get tickets." Said, "For what? Come up and show me." I said, "I'll be here all day." Never showed up. So I quit talking. That's why I made the decision to come up here. This is why our police department is so bad. There is no reason for public officials to get paid by the public when all they want to do is screw the buck. Because I have, I, this is all a six week rant. Moran is going around giving everyone citation orders or ordinance violations. What about Newcastle County? Isn't that her job? Is she being paid as a cop or ordinance? There needs to be oversight with them, because going to complain with them, it doesn't do good. You get thrown in the garbage. I've had the former police chief tell me that. When someone complains, they laugh about it, throw it away. Nothing goes in their records. Yet it should. They are public employees. Everything they do should be recorded. And the oversight with dispatch. Well, Officer Moran has solved that. She gives out her work cell for people to call her instead of dispatch. Every call service needs to be recorded. It has to go through dispatch. I, that, that is law. So why is she even employed if she can't follow the law? All of these have to follow the same laws we do. They don't get to make up their own. Why would they?
You've got both the sheriff and the chief here, so maybe we can address the first, the accident you talked about?
No.
Do you guys want to address that? No?
I mean, she, if she showed up there, and like John said, I mean, quickest person to get there to get there. After that, you know, I can't speak for that. I don't, I don't know what she was doing on scene, but I don't know if she was helping out the deputies or...
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not aware of it.
She was not doing anything. She was standing around going like this, walking around. She was not helping with the injured person. She was just standing there, walking around. That's it. And if you look at her body cam, which should still be in public record, you can see she didn't do anything. Just walked around.
John, what was the date of that accident?
June 3.
June 3.
You know, and having a husband and wife on the same department should not be there. Because if either one of them knows the other one did something wrong, they're not going to correct it. All that's doing is, is just like Thompson threatening me with arrest for nothing, because I told his wife the truth. This has to stop. Citizens of Newcastle are tired of pirate cops. There is no reason for it. The citizens pay for their wages. They can act with respect to every citizen. They don't need to be pirates saying, "You're going to bow down and kiss my feet." That badge does not give them ultimate power of anything. They have to follow the law. Thompson told me if my cat goes out my yard and poops, he can give me a ticket for it. That's not even close to what the ordinance says. So why is he threatening me with a ticket when that's not even close to what the ordinances say?
Well, I think we're all here in your side for sure. We're missing one of our police committee members, but I'd like to get the police committee together with the chief, and maybe we can review those body cams and see, and then get back with you if that's, if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Okay. All right. I'll find out when Stevenson returns, and then we'll get, we'll have a police committee to review all that and see what concerns you had and match them up with what's on body cams.
You know, because he told me he had a year to give me a ticket for those ordinances. It's been six weeks. They can't find time to give, give me a ticket? Because Thompson also told me that the tickets had to be edited. Why do tickets need to be edited? Should that first ticket be sufficient? Why do they need to be edited? Does that mean she lied? File false police report?
No, if she made a mistake on the citation, the citation needs to be corrected. So it has been a while since, since the incident.
Yeah, six weeks.
But I had done some research and stuff to make sure that we reached everything correctly. So for you to come in here and call me a liar and call my officers corrupt and everything else is unacceptable.
I don't care what you think is acceptable.
I'm telling you what's unacceptable.
Yes, it is acceptable.
And that's your opinion, and that's fine.
Because when they're corrupt, what do you call it? Corrupt. That's what it is.
And that is your opinion, you can have that opinion.
John, I am on the police committee, and I would like you to send an email to the, to our city clerk, tell him just exactly what you want to complain about. This has gone on long enough, and I'm tired of it, and I want to see what really you want to do, so I can meet with the chief and we can have a decent conversation. Would you do that for us, please?
So you're silencing me?
No, I'm asking you to put it down, exactly what you're complaining about and what you want.
I want them to follow the law.
Well...
Pretty simple. They don't get to make up law.
Well, you know, and based on what you're saying, I can't say whether or not they're making up law or not, and that's, and to get this...
So him threatening what to have to not, if the law is not making up law?
No, state a complaint. Make a complaint, so we know what we're doing and we're talking about it. You know, I will not have you, you know, stand here and degrade our chief of police. That's not going to happen. And you're not going to say things like, "Oh, they just make up their own law." Who the hell knows that? I don't know that. So make your statement and make a complaint and give it to our city clerk, and we'll go over it.
Is that where I get public requests?
Just send an email.
Wait me. Public requests from there?
Mm-hmm.
We're plotting him. Home calls, radios.
To receive any kind of records like that, you have to fill it out up at the police department. Because that, we don't have those records. The police department has them.
Because I expect retaliation, because none of these cops are man enough to say, "Oh, well, I did wrong. I'll accept punishment." They all say, "I'm going to get him, because he went and told on me," which is ridiculous.
I promise you that we will look at your complaint, and we'll go through it very thoroughly. And if there's any, any evidence there that, that we can find, we'll do something about it. It says we have to have a complaint. We have to know what you're, what you want to complain about and how that this all happened, okay? Just give it to us, and we'll go from there. And we'll get back to you.
We're hearing what you're saying, but we want to make sure we clarify it, but we also need to see the other side, because we all know there's three sides.
Oh, yeah.
So that's basically where we're at right now, is we only know your side. So we do need to look into it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there any mayor council member reports?
Yes. I would like to report to this August body that the police and our city works people did a fine job at the Warm Summer Nights concert. We had, we had everything set up that was on time, that they were there and it was good to see some councilwoman and, and Don Stevenson showed up and it was one of the finest Warm Summer Nights we've ever had. And I, I just want to know that the, the whole team just came together and it was, it was a marvelous, marvelous time. And thank you all. You know, really.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving on to old business, ordinance number three, series 2023. It's an ordinance amendment regulating animal and animal feces deposit, disposals within the town of Newcastle, third reading. So ordinance number three, series 2023, ordinance amending section 2633A1 of Article 3, Chapter 26 of the Code of the Town of, the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, 1961 to increase. Is that the right one? No?
I mean, increasing sewer, right?
That one's a sewer. Where's the animal one? I don't have it. She's got, is this? Oh, there it is. Okay.
Where is it?
I don't have it. I think she's got it labeled. That says, well, it's number three. But that's not the same one. Sorry. Okay, we'll go, we'll come back to that one. Number two on old business, Church on the Hill abandonment of easement. Okay, so we'll put that on to next meeting.
But there's just so much stuff I find so humorous in these meetings, but a lot of that is because of how much, and I'm gonna be very frank on this, how much idiocy happens. And I sit there going, "You got idiot."
No, that's ignorant.
And I, and I zip it and, but I still get that chuckle sometimes through. And that's, that's hard to not have in those videos sometimes.
See, and I, I didn't have the chuckle. I had the eye roll and the head shake.
Oh, I, I still probably have that. You just don't get to see it on camera.
Okay, number three, youth services. We have the sheriff and Ms. Barker here.
So council members, this is Jody Barker, our new youth services officer. She, most of you probably know her, but if you don't, born and raised here in Weston County, has three pretty big kids and an okay husband. So anyway, she's a graduate of UW, bachelor's degree in arts and very, very well qualified for this position. She's got a pretty expanded view of the way we're gonna head with youth services. So I'll let her talk about a few things and then you can ask questions if you'd like and go on, but I'm really, really excited to have her. She's worked with her a little bit from when she was in DFS and I could tell then that when it comes to dealing with our youth and some of our troubled youth, that that was gonna be the best we could probably do.
Sheriff's right. Born and raised Newcastle. Graduated from here in 94, a long time ago. All of my kids have graduated from here. All my siblings, my parents graduated from here. My entire life I've been here. The kids in this community are our future. I fully believe that bridging any gaps that there is between our law enforcement and our youths can be done by, by myself and Kelly. I, I think that we, I think that especially our youth services program can be really strong. We've got, and hopefully we'll add a curriculum that's research fact, has shown really significant change in the success rate of recidivism has brought Gillette's from roughly 50 to about 89% success rate with their youth services. There are a few other things, incorporating more family into it so that we get to the root of where some of the issues might occur, especially in some cases, might help. I'm really looking forward to, to working with these guys and do you guys have any questions for them?
I guess one of the questions we had was, is how's your involvement still gonna be with the school since they took?
I still plan on being involved with the schools. I'll be there with Kelly as long as she needs me for whatever the school needs me for, but I will also, I would like to be in Upton more as well and work with the youth in Osage, even though there's no school there, there are kids there. And some of those kids are at risk just simply because of the socioeconomic situation in the community. But I fully plan on being present and, and involved as far as, as far as the letting.
When, when you say you're gonna be involved and, and work with the kids, is that generally gonna happen in the schools?
Um, a lot of it will, some of it will be in the schools and some of it will be classes with my youth services kids. If there's delinquency or anything like that, it would be, I have groups also that, especially like the middle schoolers, we do theirs at lunchtime so that they don't have to be out. But the older kids, a lot of times we have ours at night. That way they're with us, we know where they are. And if we can teach curriculum that actually is critical thinking, critical thought that they can take forward throughout the other days of the week, I think there's hope.
Always.
Yep.
You know, and one of the core points to this program has always been the fact that, you know, you, you've got youth that, that maybe commit a crime or, or some of their staff crimes, whether it's minor possession, things like that. We're going to move towards a single point of entry for those citations. So if, if they have to write a citation for shoplifting or something along those lines, it'll go through her, it'll be vetted, it'll get the parents involved and it's, it's a really good way to work them out of those problems and then hopefully not carry a record with them. It gives them that one opportunity to, to move on with life with their free path, so to speak. But it won't be free because I know her.
Almost every county in the state's doing that. So we'd like to bring it up to standard where we're doing similar things as, as other counties, but tailored for us.
So I think one of the big questions was, you know, after the retirement, if there was going to be someone filling the role. And so you're going to be filling the role.
Yep. You know, and with the school thing, like you go back to what you're, I, I see no changes in, in how we, how that position does business at the school and, and we're, and being in the school. So, and with that, with that said, though, we are gonna, we're gonna spend a little bit of time in nothing because we've kind of neglected that too. And like she said, Osage, you know, you got kids there, so we can do groups there and do stuff in nothing here.
That's a good idea.
So when it comes to the funding aspect of it, I know the school's not assisting with the funding. Is that still correct?
That's, that's the letter we got, but my understanding is, is they, they must have funded this, this year.
Okay. Is, are we gonna ask, or not we, but are you gonna ask Upton to maybe help as well?
We're gonna work towards that, yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna see what our, how much business we got for, I mean, it's kind of.
I'm sure you'll have this. Unfortunately.
We don't want business.
We don't want it, but unfortunately, yeah.
So I, I know in the past, for whatever reason, you know, we've had, had very few kids out of Upton, but not, not necessarily because they're not doing stuff up there, but they've worked out a little differently than in the school.
So you guys are funded this year?
That's my understanding.
So then the ask would be if the.
Next budget.
Yeah, next budget? Yeah? Okay.
Well, welcome.
Well, good luck. Yes, welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah.
I think you'll fill Dub's shoes just fine.
I hope so. Try it again.
Erin? Okay.
Would you get up on the outside? Do you have your? I know you're gonna ask that.
Thank you.
I don't know whether I do.
Okay. So it is ordinance number three, series 2023, reference section four dash four point two, removal of feces required, exceptions and penalties. The amendment on this was to change the fee from, what was it, 10?
To $50.
So the, the fee of not cleaning up your animal's feces moved from 10 to $50? And the animals, unless certified service dogs are not allowed at the ball field? And what was the other?
Yeah, I think it's all animals.
Oh, all animals are bound from the, pardon, the ballpark? Okay. So those were the amendments made to section four dash four point two and ordinance number three, series 2023.
Your honor, I move that we approve the ordinance number three, series 2023, and ordinance amendment for regulating animals and animal feces disposal within the town of Newcastle.
And that's the third reading? Third and final? Third reading. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second, good.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to department head reports, police chief Chuck Bowles.
So really the only thing I got this evening is I would like the council to consider having occupancy permits for the residents in town. And why I would like that is because one of my initiatives is to crack down on the, the junk and the trash that people accumulate in their, their yards and, you know, tall grass and people not upkeeping their properties. I would like to see Pride come back into Newcastle and I think part of that is, is keeping our properties up and, and making things look nice and, and welcoming the people that drive past and come and patronize our businesses. So one thing we've run into is not being able to know exactly who lives in a, in a house or, or a mobile home or, or apartment or wherever. And to issue citations to those folks can be difficult if you don't know who lives there. So by having an occupancy permit, people have to come in and get one from city hall and then we would know actually who lives there and change his hands and we'd be able to kind of keep up on who's, and each residence.
In other words, when somebody owns a house, as I do, I would have, in addition, I would have to have an occupancy permit to the city to live there.
Correct. And if there's some residents that are not inhabitable, then they wouldn't be issued a, a permit.
So it's kind of like a census report?
And, and your goal, don't we have ordinances against junk in the yards and tall grass
Do you want to talk about this further than the police committee?
Pardon?
Do you want to talk about it further with the police committee?
I think that, what do you think?
I think so.
Yeah, let's, let's talk this over. Cause where I'm sitting right now, I'm not in favor of your idea. I don't want to hold much property and have to commit to live there.
That's all I had this evening.
Okay. Any questions for chief? City attorney Dublin Hughes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, for the council's consideration, concerning the joint powers board, we came to the conclusion that now that the agreement is going to be signed or is signed, we need to get an advertisement out in the paper to have the two at large joint powers board members know to put in an application at the city halls of either Upton or Newcastle or with the county. So just so that, you know, there's actual notice to people and they do see that there's going, that they have the opportunity to apply. For the joint powers board, I would ask for a motion to put an advertisement in the paper, basically stating that they can pick up an application down at city hall and fill that out and that will be looked over by the joint powers board selection committee.
So would that be an advertisement split between county and city?
So I think what is, I think the county basically agreed upon that if they were to come down and have that just done at city hall and Upton were to put it in their newspaper, that would be sufficient, but we can also basically discuss if the council so wishes, you know, basically splitting that fee. The issue is though, then we start having to think about whether or not they would put it in the county paper because they would have to or just, you know.
So they're gonna put it in the Upton paper and put it in Newcastle? Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Concerning the joint powers board again, I've been drafting up a lease between the joint powers board itself and the city of Newcastle, seeing that the property is and, you know, is owned by the city of Newcastle. I'll be sending that out hopefully tomorrow and I'd like the council to take a look at that if they would, just to make sure that everything is, or there are things that you have issues with. We'll need to have that in place hopefully prior to having the joint powers board actually set up just because, you know, it's, it's a pretty fairly long document and it would just be best receiving the requirements of the joint powers board, the timeline.
So now what is this? I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, so I won't be able to comment on it, but what?
So it's a lease. So the, the building itself is owned by the city, so the entity that will be created, the combined, I think we're still working on that name because it's a mouthful, but the combined communications joint powers board for Weston County will be leasing that property. Cause I mean, even with us being a partial entity, it is its own legal entity.
Gotcha. So you need a motion?
No, I, I'll be sending it out and then I just, I just want the council to know to have some attention paid to it because it's, it's a fairly long document and hopefully it's something that lasts for quite a long time. I think now we have two, no, we have three ordinances if I'm correct.
Yeah, but they're in different areas.
Yeah, so I changed it to be four for the new and then five and then six. So for water.
Which is?
Would be ordinance number two, but it should be changed to ordinance number four for the sequence of ordinances as they stand.
Now, what's this that we've got with us?
Yeah. Should be section 26 dash 19 rates for water service. And I think the numbers that we came to on that, which I changed for the first 2,000 gallons would be 1950 per month and then over 2,000 gallons per rated on amount furnished is $7 per 1,000 gallons per month. The one question? The one question that I did have concerning this ordinance, which I don't think was discussed, was the outside the city limits rate, which is a flat charge of eleven on my draft and I don't think that's what we had agreed to or what the Sewer Water Committee wanted. So I wanted to figure out and clarify on that before we move on with this ordinance.
Actually, not a hundred percent. When we have the committee meeting, what we agreed to as far as the how to how to serve the area definitely.
And I did not bring my brief file with me.
Well, I think the the eleven dollars that we have there was the prior draft value. So I needed to make sure, and in fact, we'll have to figure that out, just to make sure that we're not, you know, doing something other than what the water sewer and water wanted to do, so should we table that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd really hate to table it because it's something that we need to get moving.
I think we could move forward with it and then edit that flat charge.
On the next reading?
On the next reading.
Yeah.
If that's fine with the council.
So what is, the flat charge is only eleven, but the first two thousand gallons for any city is nineteen fifty?
Yeah, that's what the numbers were, at least that I was given.
So living out of the city is cheaper? Am I reading that right?
Well, that's the flat rate per a thousand gallons. I, again, these are just the numbers I was given.
Can we commence with the reading so that we can make a motion on it?
Yeah, just give me a second. So ordinance number four, series two thousand twenty-three, ordinance amending section twenty-six dash nineteen of Article Three, Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of the Town of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, nineteen sixty-one, to increase sewer rates and providing for an effective date, be it ordained by the governing body of the city of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming, that section one, section twenty-six dash nineteen A and B of Article Three, Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, nineteen sixty-one, shall be and hereby is amended to provide as follows. Section twenty-six dash nineteen, rates for water service. A, within city limits, the water rates for water service furnished within the corporate limits of the city shall be eight dollars per water meter per month plus the following amounts based upon water consumption per month. One, first, two thousand gallons, nineteen dollars fifty cents per month. Number two, over two thousand gallons appropriated and amount, an amount furnished, seven dollars per one thousand gallons per month. B, outside the city, the water rates for water service furnished, services furnished outside the corporate limits of the city shall be eight dollars per water meter per month plus the following amounts based upon water consumption per month. Number one, water rate shall be a flat charge of eleven dollars per thousand gallons. Said rates may be increased or decreased at any time by resolution of the governing body. Section two, the ordinance shall become effective as the first billing cycle after passage and upon public publication as provided by law.
There we go.
I would move that we approve ordinance number four, series twenty-three on first reading.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes. So I think it's a shame that everybody cleared out when we started talking rates. But just so everybody in the room understands and you guys are willing to sit.
And she's out of the county.
Water and sewer is supposed to be run like a business and we've been charging grossly under the the statewide average of forty-three dollars. And there's a reason why we have problems with our infrastructure and we don't have enough money to replace legs of line that are problematic because we've been undercharging for years and years and years. So although it's not popular and nobody wants to pay higher rates, it's important to maintain our infrastructure and to, you know, have money in reserves for emergency purposes. And inflation is through the roof right now. I work with communities all across Wyoming and they, you know, projects that cost eight million dollars a couple of years ago are now up closer to twenty million dollars. And we have the D O P come in tonight and they were talking about inflation. It's impacting everyone. So it's important that we look at our rates and and try to get them up where they're supposed to be, even though a lot of people find that painful because they don't wanna have to pay more rates, but we can't continue to do it like this. Prior councils, you know, it's been kicked down low so far. We need to take care of it now. That's all I have.
What do you say?
I know years ago, the same subjects came up and the council the same way, you know, we have to do this. We have to improve just because at the same time, people want sewer.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. First reading passed.
Thank you, council. Onto the second ordinance. I think it should be ordinance number five in the sequence of the numbers for series two thousand twenty-three. I think the numbers there that are changed are the first two thousand gallons or less would be changed to twenty-one dollars fifty-three cents per month and then over two thousand gallons prorated on amount furnished is nine dollars per a thousand gallons per month. And those are the only two changes that I had on sewer, I believe.
Okay, so this is right, right?
Is this your?
Yes, it's just number five instead of number three. So ordinance amending section twenty-six dash thirty-three, A one of Article Three, Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of the Town of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, nineteen sixty-one, to increase sewer rates and providing for an effective date, be it ordained by the governing body of the city of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming, that the first two thousand gallons or less is twenty-one fifty-three per month, over two thousand gallons prorated on amount furnished, nine dollars per thousand gallons per month was the only amendment changed to this ordinance.
Those sound like big ones too.
I got a question about the water. It's just an observation. I've noticed there seems to be a lot of air in the system lately on cats. I'm spitting.
We now on to the burial for the regular burial plots at Greenwood Cemetery and the charges that were changed. I agree, the only change on that was two fifty to five hundred dollars on the regular burial plot. I do have one edit on the certification publication, which is it should be twenty-three on those days instead of twenty-two.
Oh, I'm back.
Yep.
On the back.
Oh, on the back, yeah. So publication.
Okay, so ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-three, the amendment of the ordinance.
What's the number? Eighty-six.
Regulating the price of regular burial plots at the Greenwood Cemetery was, number one, regular burial plot was moved from two hundred fifty to five hundred dollars.
What's this ordinance number?
Six.
Six. Do you give the first reading?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, I move that the except ordinance number six, series two thousand twenty-three, on first reading.
Second. Okay, we got a, any further discussion?
Better expand it in cemetery because we're running out of burial plots. I was thinking about getting plots for the fall.
You better do it quick.
We're we're trying to make the we raised the rate by the past and we're, we also made it so we're gonna place them below that we're uniform and it's gonna be nice when it's completed. That's all I have.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, council. I believe there was a discussion last time to amend some of the ordinances regarding the placement of headstones and monuments as it's called in the municipal code book. The council, actually, if you look at the the code itself, states the council can at any time. It doesn't specify as to how, but they can dictate the, basically, the administration of the cemetery and rules and regulations there. So if the council wanted to, they could basically put out, you know, basically motion to have the cemetery crew place signs or just not allow the placement of monuments and headstones anywhere else other than on the west side of Alt Gray.
Which I guess if I'm not being mad on here, you do have a monument application states our ordinances involved with monuments and placing of that. We could add that for, let's say, block twenty-seven through, or block twenty-eight through block, let's say, thirty-four is the new section. So we could actually just put it on there and as the monuments come in, monument applications come in, we can specify they have to stay on the west end of Alt Gray.
Speaking of the cemetery, do we need to ask for a motion in regards to that discussion? With the business owner? The flag?
Oh, I know. I think, so we had a business owner come and offer to voluntarily pay for and install a flagpole at the cemetery in the veterans' portion of the cemetery. Part of the master plan, as the cemetery committee is seeing, is to move this veterans' memorial to a different part of the cemetery. So what we recommended to him is once we present to the council, which we were planning on presenting in August, we haven't nailed down the date yet, to the whole council for the cemetery master plan. At that time, then we would, we would begin a discussion with him on how we want to place it, where we want to place it, things like that. If that's okay, if that's the pleasure of the council, that's the way I would recommend proceeding. That way, if we don't have a flagpole, but where it is now, where we're placing it, we can have, we can turn around and do it later. So it only makes sense to do it once.
Right. That'll be great, in August. Okay.
Just to appease the ordinance gods, we probably should have a a motion to basically state that in the applications, they would, you know, have to be put on the west side, just so that that can be put out.
Okay. Do we have that motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. West side.
Thank you, Madam.
That is all.
Okay, a city clerk is not present, so Public Works Supervisor Greg Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to request opening the three positions we put into for the budget this year. Three new positions into the Public Works Department. We requested three, three new positions that will fill the role of different needs. Build the general labor employees so assignments can vary.
Starting on what pay rate? What take?
Our standard pay rate, which we're working off of now, apparently. I, I believe eighteen dollars now we're starting, no experience. Nineteen at the end of their probation, which would include their probation area and their fifty cent raise for a C E L.
You need three people.
Yes. We have budgeted for it. It was in, in with the wages amongst the different departments.
I move that we open up the three new voluntary positions.
Correct. General labor positions.
General labor positions at the the base rate.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Next, I'd like to request a water sewer committee meeting to discuss the, not only the letter to be sent out to the public concerning the rates we discussed with the water sewer committee meeting, but also the rough sewer claim and issues with the sewers.
When does Don come home?
I don't know. I just saw that he was flying to Hawaii.
So when do you want to meet? You want to mark a tour meeting? When do you want to do this?
I would recommend, I guess, the week of twenty-fourth later so Don could be here. Councilman Seans could be here if necessary. We could even go into the first week of August.
I don't say, I don't want to wait that long. Huh?
He gets back next Saturday. I'm sorry I know that.
Okay, so the twenty?
I would, then I would recommend the twenty-sixth, the five o'clock. Yeah, twenty-sixth of July, precisely.
Here?
Yes.
I'll have, we'll email Don.
I can put out an invite.
Yeah, if you want to do that.
And if I can request a solid waste committee meeting to discuss rates for solid waste. When are you talking? We can do it that that week or the next, or this week or or the first week of August. I'm working this week most of it. I'm on my way. The twenty, how about the first log, let's say five o'clock? That'll be a Tuesday. I have to work then. You gotta work. We're tired.
I have a scheduled conflict coming first.
I'm, I'm pretty much available anytime.
I mean, if we did it earlier in the day, I could do, like, lunch or something, that I can do within use.
Uh, what's your schedule like?
Uh, on which day?
Any day, next three weeks, except Thursday.
I work the first and the second and after that, I don't know, I should be off. When I'm good, uh, twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
Of July?
Of July.
We could do it the twenty-fifth, if that works.
What day?
Twenty-fifth.
Of July?
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock on the twenty-fifth? That works.
I guess I wasn't really clear on the direction we want to move, or if we want to move with the parking, starting on South Seneca and North Seneca. We discussed it at the last meeting.
I say do it.
I just need to know what council's.
Do we have a motion to move forward with the parking spaces on?
I would do that. Against ten, ten parking spaces along Main, near Main Street.
Are you starting those off?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, uh.
That's on Seneca, right?
Yeah, north and south Seneca.
And you're gonna make them big?
What's that? Yeah, um, the original plan was to put eight feet or nine feet, now it's ten feet, or an extra foot. Considering building backups, oversized mirrors on three-quarter tons, I feel like it's too small parking space, it's too difficult to get into, people won't buy, won't agree, won't look at the recommendation to park within the lines, I guess. So, we went wider because of the mirrors and things like that.
I've gotten the ticket and I can stay for a minute.
And you should.
If that's a recommendation the council will, will work on getting that in. Other than that, are there any questions or comments on that report?
Just to clarify, there was a motion on the table for that.
I didn't get a second, we have a second?
Oh, yeah, I second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I think it'd be great to have more parking spaces.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
We'll begin moving forward with that.
Perfect.
Good catch, doubling.
I'll roll in there with the ten percent from Hannah for the extra business you're gonna get.
Nope. I'll add that ten percent.
Questions or comments on the public works reports or project reports?
I just have a, a question of clarification, um, I had one of the homeowners, where they're doing the project, um, are they going to, is that where they're, are they gonna re-sod the hole from where they started to the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they're gonna sod their trench lines, so anything they disturb has to be put back or sowed.
Cause that's what I thought and that's what I told them, so.
All sprinkler systems will have to be repaired before the end of the project.
Okay, cause I remember reading that in the bed, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't get false information.
We have a line item for the sprinkler systems, it's, I believe it's called unmarked utilities, and basically we, per dollar price that they have to, that we have to pay if, for those kind of repairs, so.
So, the, um, South Summit Avenue retaining law, it said you don't have anything to report, but what kind of land or issue are we dealing with?
The problem is, as long as we don't own it, we can't fix it.
So it's like the same thing with the corner on Wentworth, like, you need to own eight foot behind it?
Yes, we would have to own the land before we can, we can do anything with the wall.
Plus, it's gonna be super expensive on the city's asset.
That's the other problem is, roughly looking at the length of wall we replaced before, compared to the amount of wall we have to fix this time, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollar project.
Oh, wow.
Does, um, has anybody contacted, like, the historical association, both local and state?
First, I mean.
Yeah.
I didn't mention to them they need a go funding project to, to rebuild those walls and.
I'm worried about the ones going.
I think there's funding available, but without any robbery, there, there's really nothing we can do.
Okay, what about the wall, like, when you turn to go to Pine's Motel, like, on the side of the Harley House? Where the sidewalk is, is that ours or theirs?
That would be theirs as well.
Cause that looks like it's getting ready to go. And I just worry because if that goes, then you have, we go here and then you have the houses.
Problem is, where do we start and where do we stop? South Summit along the state highway, I can, I can see doing something with it, if we start looking at every residential wall that needs replaced, this could get into some pretty serious trouble.
Well, I guess the dangerous thing is we set the precedent by starting with that one on corner of Wentworth, cause I mean, ultimately, it should be the homeowner's responsibility to fix that retaining wall. But, I mean.
So have they tried, have they contacted you at all, or are we just, so are they just sitting waiting for?
I think they're treading water because they didn't want to incur the cost and they.
They don't want to give up.
I, I was under the impression that they, um, were willing to give up the land, some of the, the folks.
Quite honestly, with everything else in my plate right now, that one just, it kind of falls right away, so I apologize for that, but, uh.
But it is kind of unsightly.
It is nice, so I don't like, I mean, more than thanks to that. But, we, we can move forward, um, we can talk to homeowners, but it's ultimately gonna come down to the council and, and what we're willing to spend to, to repair the wall, replace the wall, and how much farther we want to go.
And buy the land.
Buy the land? I believe, but the other.
Have to beat it over to it.
Surrender it. Buy it.
Okay.
So, then two more burning questions with, uh, Duff Avenue Sewer Project?
Yes.
Like, are we, are we moving ahead, Ken, on schedule for that to be done next year?
Yes, we met, I met with engineers, we went through, um, I have to go talk with the landowner adjacent to the current lift station, we're going to try and do a land swap. Where the lift station sits now, we're going to try and do a land swap where we can get the land east of where it currently is, so we can build the new lift station, keep the old one in place, and then essentially tear down the other one, give them the land back, so we don't own half of the portion of their land.
So we're trying to move it from where it is currently?
Yeah, just to the east of where it is.
Oh, to the east?
Towards Duck, closer to Duff Avenue.
Oh, okay, kind of where the, the tanks kind of sit now?
Um, actually, on the other side of the tanks.
Of the pad?
Closer to the light pole at the intersection of the alley and Duff Avenue. That way, we can keep the line in service while we rebuild or build a new one.
And then we just have to tie it in.
That'd be nice for you.
It would make a very shorter, very short, uh, changeover period, cause then it'd be just a matter of when you connect up the bike, wouldn't be the only time anybody, anybody would be at service, and I don't think anybody would even notice it.
And then the Seventh Avenue?
Seventh Avenue is finalized, we got a permit to construct, um, we plan on going to bid probably October, November timeframe.
For spring, right?
Yes, for, for spring startup, I'm guessing they're gonna want to start June, June-ish timeframe, so it would be similar to a South Summit project, we start in June, finish it up July, August timeframe, and lay asphalt around August, September. But, actually, the only thing we have, the bid package is ready to go, all we have to do is start advertising for it.
Awesome. I follow you, Ken.
Just a question, what's going on down there on rodeo, right there at that little corner?
They are actually outside the city of the municipal.
I know, I know it is, but does anybody know?
The only thing we know, we investigated, um, due to the fact they called in a locator septic tank, we investigated what they were thinking about doing with the septic tank, and it will be simply a holding tank, is what they told us. They'll have a water system and a holding tank for the sewage, and have it pumped out, they'll be able to field as well, from what I understand. As far as what the building is, we did not inquire about what.
So the county's building the building?
No, it's, it's in the county, it's not inside city.
Right down there, put it down there on?
And you build a shop. That whole parcel from the bypass, basically, rodeo strip and from the end of it. Rodeos, I'm sure, and street.
Or Shirley Harder, that, I mean, she's the one that asked me.
That's all county problem, that's all in the county, not inside city.
So when, when the septic tank gets full, then he's gonna call somebody to pump it?
That's all you do when you're on the city sewer.
I got a bridge in Brooklyn for sale, you know?
Without, without having any authority as, you know, requiring a building permit or anything like that, I, Chuck and I have looked at it, we really don't see any, anything we can do.
You know, that's, seems to me that'd be wetland, I'm sure, surprised EPA hasn't got after.
Um, we did check and see there's no DQ permit, we did tell them they have to get a DQ permit, and DQ will be the ones to look into if they can account for it. As long as everything's self-contained and they have a permit for DQ, then they're perfectly, flood plain too. That's more my concern than anything is, is the moving in, out, shelter.
Anything else for? Any standing committee reports, um, do you wanna, because, do you want to get a, a date set for, for the police committee?
We can, I don't know.
Well, you said he's coming back the twenty-second? That Saturday, Darren, the twenty-second or the twenty-nine?
Next Saturday.
This coming Saturday?
That's next Saturday, twenty-second.
Alright, so, any time before the twenty-seventh?
Probably any time next week.
So either Monday or Tuesday?
I can do anything next week.
Tom, Monday or Tuesday?
July?
Twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
My calendar is.
Okay.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth?
Would be best for me.
And I'm sure after four-thirty, or, it's after four-thirty work, so like, what, four forty-five? Okay, do you want to meet them in City Hall?
Yeah. Right up here?
Yeah, I'll give, uh, uh, I'll send an email to Don about it.
What time did you say?
Four forty-five.
We're gonna do it at your place, we get a tour to plan the party? Land opening?
So it's up there?
Up here.
We'll be up here, I can be a tour after.
Okay.
At four forty-five, okay. Alright, any other standing committee reports? Any other business?
Yeah, so, Madam Mayor, I brought it up already with the Wyoming Department of Transportation, um, and they said they're looking into it with, uh, Google, but I, I just, uh, um, noticed that there's tons of traffic bypassing Newcastle, so I didn't know, you know, if the thing with Google doesn't go through, if we could put, like, a sign over there or something that says, hey, you know, Google came, told me to come this way, but if you keep going up the road, you know, and try to divert the traffic.
That would be a highway sign.
Or if it's in off the county road, too, there's a, a spot where everybody parks there, so I didn't know if we could provide some kind of informational sign that talks about Newcastle, but.
Would that be, uh?
We would have to get permission from the county.
Really, Cameron? Yeah.
I do know it's an issue, um, East Wentworth, we've seen a lot more increased truck traffic.
Yeah, driving down that road. Cause it takes some.
Three hundred oh seven shortest drive take for that one.
Well, knock on wood, we haven't had a semi-turn and get stuck yet.
I don't know how one of them didn't make, or made it across there, cause he was, he was cutting the corner pretty close, his dials were hanging off the one edge.
So, I mean, I, uh, I went to take the Greenhouse Road, and I was appalled because I was met with, uh, with nudity, because some people had stopped there to make pit stop, and, uh, they're from Oklahoma, and I gotta see it all. So, anyways. It'd be, it'd be better if they came in and used our facility and maybe spent a few dollars, but anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, any other? Claims against the city dated July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three?
Madam Mayor, I move that we pay the claims against the city.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I move adjourned.
Hold on, I gotta write down that Darren has seen.
I second.
Do we have an emotion to adjourn?
Yep.
And we have a second? Time?
Oh, yeah, I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Adjourned at eight twenty-four.
Get out there and see this convertible, come on, man.
Yeah, that's shredded.